Pickle pepper. Oh, we were already on recording? That's great. Exclude that from the minutes. Good morning, everybody. The time is 9:01 a.m. It's Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. I'm going to call this regular term meeting of the B County Commissioners' Court to order. We are physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioners' Courtroom, Number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, 78102. That was the call to order. Agenda item number two, prayer. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioner DeWitt in brief prayer?
Father God, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for life, sir. We thank you for all that you do for us. Please continue to hold your hand over our first responders, police, military, and over our country. We need all the help we can get and guide this Commissioners' Court to make the best decision for the good of all people. We ask all these things in price name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. It's like I never had them until you came down. You did, man. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Jerry.
I wish we could, but we've got some important business to attend to. Moving on to agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. Thank you all for being here today. It's wonderful to have a large and robust crowd, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate you making the effort and coming over. I'm glad you were able to find seating amongst all of our elected officials and department heads that are present in the meeting this morning, but it's always great to see. If you'd like to identify yourself for the record, you're more than happy to. If you have public comment, hold off on that until the next, the public comment agenda item, which is coming in a couple of agenda items. Or if you're going to speak at a, one of our agenda items later on in the, in the agenda, then I can address you at that time.
That's fine.
Thanks. Such a boisterous and responsive crowd this morning. Thank you all very much for being here. Please keep coming back. Agenda item number four, rec, uh, I'm sorry, agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court opening remarks. Commissioner Linna, I believe you're up first this time.
Okey dokey. We, we hosted a B County Elections Watch Party, and I want to thank everyone for attending that. That was, it was a good turnout. And with that, I am definitely glad that Tuesday is over with, as well as a lot of people I want to talk to. The biggest reason and response I get is because we can go back to regular scheduled programming and cut out those commercials. So, but anyway, also with that, I want to congratulate all the candidates that won their respective seats in this last election. So congratulations to all. I want to thank Environmental Officer Robbie Guerrero. There was, he was called out not this Saturday, but last Saturday by the Sheriff's Office. There was two on County Road 329 and on Kinkler Lane. There was an enormous pile of illegal dumping. And then he was called out again Sunday morning by the Sheriff's Office, as well as I was. And same person, anyway, long story short, found out who it was, and appropriate action was taken. So that was done by, by Sunday end of day. It was all, all taken care of. Spoke to road and bridge about some potholes on County Road 314, 324, and 331, along with a, a, there needs to be a dip sign on 314 where the low water crossing is, where that creek goes through. That was taken care of. And just a handful of calls of people, just with various little issues and whatnot. Also attended the St. James Ball Festival. I was asked to call the bingo. That was a great crowd, as always. Thanks for everyone that came up to that. And I wanted to thank Patty Johnson for helping me man the Rialto during the wine walk. That was, that was a well-attended event. I heard that they sold like 175 tickets for the wine walk and a lot of people. It was good.
That's great.
Very good. So thank you, Patty, for helping me with that, and I will pass to my Commissioner on the left.
Thank you, sir. And since we have such a short agenda, Doug, I have several things I can pontificate for a while today.
Take all the time you need, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Or actually, let me correct that. Take all the time you want.
I like that better. Attended the Veterans Day Reis-Lane Ceremony on Monday. It was well-attended. There were probably 40, 45 people there. A couple of Commissioners were there, along with myself. Garden Club did a great job. I appreciate the county setting everything up. The maintenance folks did a great job, did everything ready when the people showed up, cleaned up real quick, so it went off real well there.
Excellent.
Hats off to everybody. Okay, let's all go to Highway 673 going to Mineral. There's been a lot of surveying going on up there, and I'm getting calls now from the landowners. They're finding survey markers on their property. And I had a landlord send me a copy, and it's a small button about, oh, let's say, three inches across, has Texas Department of Transportation, then it says RW on it. Well, RW stands for right-of-way. And this particular individual said this button was about to put inside their property line. I said, well, maybe not. If it says right-of-way, and we have to remember, 673 at one time was a county road. It was made into a foreign market road, from what I understand, in the 30s or 40s. Some of the old fences may not have been exactly the right place. So when they come through, they're marking their right-of-way and say, okay, our right-of-way goes from here to here. I think it's 120 feet. It may be over on your property a little bit. Hopefully, it's not. I don't know what their action would be. I know this individual is getting ready to put in a new fence. I said, you might want to put a T-post next to this and don't remove it, and check with them and see what the outcome should be. What we all need to remember with government property, whether it's state, city, county, federal, that property can always belong to the government until they get rid of it. They may forget it's there. It may sit there for 100 years, and they don't realize it's there, but it still belongs to the government. Just because it's on your property doesn't mean it's yours. It still belongs to the government. And they can come back later and say, it's our property. We want it back. So be careful when you're dealing with that, but that's what's happening now on 673. While we're talking about highway right-of-way, we also need to remember the difference between foreign market roads, state highways, and county roads. It's confusing to the public sometimes, and sometimes it's confusing to us as Commissioners. What we have to remember, and I'm speaking now of 181 Business heading north out of Beville, they've got a 120-foot right-of-way that goes to a county road right-of-way. Well, everything up to that county road right-of-way is still highway department. We can't go in that highway department and start patching it or whatever, because they're very sensitive about county or anybody else repairing their roadway. We may have a pothole or an area right at the edge where the county and the state meet, but we can't just arbitrarily go fix it. I'm sure there's liability issues. Why didn't you do this? Somebody gets hurt, the county didn't know, the state did. So be very careful when we're dealing with the public. And we say, oh, yeah, we'll be in there and fix it next week. Well, we really can't. It's up to the highway department. We work with them very closely, but that, that is their property and their responsibility. And I'm speaking mainly of Oak Hill Drive right now, where it enters into 181. There are some potholes there. We're taking a look at them, but that's on the state right-of-way. Further down Oak Hill Drive, and we just resurfaced that county road, if you will, about eight months ago, there is a pothole in, in the road. It's about the size of a dig. Skid it, and it's, it's sunk in, so they're going to take care of that. So they're looking at it. On the same token, got several calls about, and we've talked about an area to the east of 181, back in that subdivision where the county road stopped. It just stopped, and then there's road past that. And there's been a lot of talk about, why didn't they pave this, pave that? Well, according to what I understand, we're responsible for a tenth of a mile. Well, it depends on where you start measuring from where that tenth of a mile is. If you measure from the edge of the road, it's another 15 or 20 feet over there, but if you measure from the middle of the road, it's, we've already matched that. Doing research Tuesday, I went out there and talked to some people, and years ago, we were going to do a public hearing. We're going to do a vote on paving that part of the road, and the people out there said they didn't want to do it. I was involved. Well, they can't remember saying that now, and it turns out that a lady that owned the property was adamant about not having it paved, but she since sold the property several years ago. So it's an interesting situation, because in the meantime, they've gone in and spent several thousand dollars putting down pavement for their driveway and their, their entrance to the property. And there's a section about as far as from here to that wall that is, it's in good shape, but it's between the edge of the county pavement and where their, their driveways are. And I'll be honest, I'm not sure what we're going to do, if anything. Because here's the big problem. Any new roads that we put in, we need a 60-foot right-of-way. There's not a 60-foot right-of-way available. It's 50-something feet. So I know that there's a thought process, well, 50 feet's pretty close to 60. Well, that's kind of like when I was in community affairs and you had to have five acres. Well, I've got 4.9. Isn't that close enough? Well, if you start saying, yeah, 4.9 is close enough, well, what about 4.8? I got 4.6. You let him go. So 60 feet is 60 feet. So to get the 60 feet you need, you're, you're going to take land away from, two landowners, or one landlord is going to give it all up. You're going to take the fences down. They have to put them back. I don't know whether we want to chase that bull or not. I'm debating on whether to even go forward with it, because one of the landowners advised me Tuesday, yeah, we know there's not 60-foot a right-of-way here. So they're already aware of it. So it's gotten stirred up there pretty, it's pretty interesting. Let's just leave it at that. And what I would recommend is that we, as Commissioners, as county leaders, need to be careful what we tell people we're going to do, especially if it's not in our precinct, because we may not be able to do it. And then they hold the other precinct Commissioner at fault for not getting it done. So we're working on that one right now. Judge, if you would, that's about all I have. I think I've stirred the pot enough, sir.
Are you sure?
I think so. I may come back, but that's right now.
All right. You reserved that, right?
Thank you, sir.
Can I add one comment? Because I have the...
No, because it's not a discussion.
That is true. I'll do it.
During your opening remarks, you could just happen to touch on the same thing.
Certainly will.
And as long as we keep that, you know, kind of organized, we can go back and forth.
They just expand my remarks.
Yeah. Commission.
I'm glad I passed the call.
I'll write first. Nobody, nobody wants to hear from Commissioner Farias now. We want to hear what Commissioner Levada has to say.
If you could be quick. I'll be quick.
Take it. All the time you want.
Yesterday, I attended the A.C. Jones Veteran Ceremony at the high school. That was with all the kids there. That was really, really nice out there. And then I came and made the garden club here at the courthouse, which was put on by the gar, uh, they did that out here. Well-attended yesterday, you know, so that, that was good. Big thank you to John Benson, Mayor Willow, and Mitchell Smith and his crew. They took care of that problem that we had at the tax office. They went and dug up the street, replaced the line all the way down to their main line.
The sewer line?
Yes.
Isn't that wonderful?
So we...
No more water feature inside the...
No more water feature. We've had 10 calls in two years. So that should be over and done with. So a big, big shout out to the city. They, they got the call. They took care of it within 24 hours. So they got after it. So thank you very much. Got a couple of calls from Live Oak Street and off of Des Smith, some potholes out there, so we're going to go review those today and take a look at that and see what goes on there. Also drove, I drive on car road all the time. I drove out there Friday, and we got there and my wife says, hey, there's, there's no stop sign. I said, what do you mean there's no stop sign? I had backed it. Stop sign, pole, everything was gone. So called Jonathan, and I said, hey, the stop sign's missing, the pole's missing, everything's, it's not there anymore. So they took care of it by end of date on Friday. So that was, that was for safety issues there.
They set it in concrete this time?
Yeah, there's rules about that, and they have to have the breakaway.
Oh, goodness.
If not, they'll come back and they'll sue us and stuff like that. So they have to, they have to have breakaway stuff on there.
Somebody in the garage is about to have a second stop sign.
Yes, sir. The bathroom upgrades at the community affairs is completed and done, so if you haven't gone by there to see, they, they've got all the grab bars. Everything is ADA compliant in both bathrooms, so that's, that's completed there. We've also got a bid that'll be on the agenda later on for the awning at the Justice Building, along with the, the gutters that are rusted out in the back. So that'll be there. And that's for safety issues there. Some of the folks, you know, from the Auditor's Office and Judge Bauer, Nina, that's, they will have a slip and fall almost because it gets wet along the backside, so we're going to try to take care of that. And then the last of the sprinkler systems were taken care of here at the courthouse this past week, so they're all done. Everything's 100% here at the courthouse.
Sounded almost like a challenge.
Almost. It was a challenge. Just wanted to give you, I know we passed a few months ago some money for the upgrades at DPS wait stations. I want you to know that both stations are being utilized, south and east, and Trooper Yannick is out there working those stations. So our, that's well-spent money that we do on the, on the repairs. Get that done. Now on the, let's see, the track I got, I was asked to mention that the track at the Moreno Junior High is 75% complete. There will be, when it does get complete, they will be open to the public for them to utilize out there to run, you know, to walk and things like that for exercise. And that the new school that the bond issue passed will have their groundbreaking in January for that, at Ori Hall, that, that new school. And also...
Commissioner, have they named the school yet?
I don't think they have. The con, the contract that we're waiting for at the BDA did get signed. There'll be a press release and groundbreaking and all. They'll, they'll take over BT 24 in January, BT 25 in April, along with the paint booth, and they will write a first refusal on 26th of May.
Wow.
So all that will be released forthcoming. I just want to let you know that after all the negotiating between two lawyers, you know how these lawyers are, they've finally got, they've finally got settled down, and the papers are signed. So we have a new company coming, and I will disclose the name and what they'll do on this next morning, or I'll have the executive director come by and give us a breakdown.
That's great. And what is the name of the company?
Hey, hey, hey. And with that, I'm going to pass to Commissioner Libades.
Well, thank you. As a quick comment, I'm all ears when you talk about the road, because I have a similar situation down in South Beach County where the road's too small. Constituents want the road to be wider, but in order to do that, each landlord is going to have to give up a little bit of land, so I don't know how far that's going to go. So I'm all ears. Good morning, everyone.
That would have gone better before Commissioner.
Well, I was just trying to stay with the same thought.
Now you gotta have the replay. Yeah. I didn't mean to interrupt you doing that.
But no, that's, that's quite all right. So first of all, I'd just like to recognize all the veterans for their service and dedication to our country. Thank you very much for your service. Thank you for keeping us free in all the things that you do. Really appreciate that. Also like to, to recognize Bobby Jimson, Community Affairs Director, for keeping me notified of a speeding issue that occurred in Skidmore. And then also, he was very instrumental in my town hall meeting on, giving me a support on cats and dogs and trash and the crow park as well. So, so thank you, Bob. Appreciate all your support. Also like to recognize Jennifer Reina for facilitating a construction kickoff meeting with JL Square for the EOC parking lot. So that was facilitated last week. And also, I'd like to also recognize her efforts for less than the use of a large conference room for storing all the furniture was getting ready to arrive. We didn't have a place to put it, and she creatively came up with the idea, hey, let's just put in a large conference room. We're going to save on storage money, so saving money, saving money to the county. So thank you. Thank you, Jim. Ronnie Jones, he played a part here and helped me last week on identifying what we could do with the speeding that's occurring near in Skidmore. So we're going to put up a mobile radar detector, and he's going to be helping patrols for these speeding areas. And also Patricia Trevino out of the Auditor's Office for helping generate some cost reports for my town hall meeting. So thank you, Patricia. Appreciate that. Just some general information, the EOC building is progressing well. We attended and participated in the parking lot kickoff meeting, which went very well. We did receive all of the new furniture, so it's in the process of being installed. They started forming the sidewalks, so hopefully by Wednesday, tomorrow, or Thursday, we'll probably start pouring the concrete for the, for the sidewalks. They also installed some conduit for some technical cabling that was going to go to our maintenance building. So that was needed before the sidewalk and the parking lot started, so we had a little bit of rush job, thanks to April for helping us expedite this request, got it through the system pretty quick, so thank you, April. Bathroom's about 90% complete, and we're planning to conduct a punchless walk through this Friday through the building. So if anybody would like to assist, fresh set of eyes is always great, because it's amazing sometimes you can walk past a, a light switch that has, the drawwall hadn't been completely finished, and you just walk by it and miss it, so fresh set of eyes are always welcome. Last week, I attended a two-day county investment conference in Houston. Excellent learning event, and it also helped me keep my fiduciary skills intact, so I appreciate that. Madam Auditor was, was in attendance as well. Tended the veteran celebrate, celebration there at the Beville High School and also here at the courthouse by the Garden Club. Great event. Heard it turned out. Excellent speaker. One thing that caught my ear is I didn't realize that we only have 1% of our people veteran military. That was, that was a nightmare for me. I didn't realize that. So, so you learn something from, from these events. One more thing I've done, I hosted my second town hall meeting in Skidmore, and it went very, very well. Had some guest speakers, was Dev Castaldo, Randy Geary, Bobby Jamison, Angela Leach with Grant Works. Great meeting. There was no shouting. We, we had good conversation, and we had adult conversation, you know, how to resolve some of these problems together, because some of these go, date back, you know, 20, 30 years. That's nothing new. Just keep going and moving over again. The, there was a review of our county budgets, how money was being spent, so they were happy to see that. The, the biggest issue, which continues, is dogs and parks. So thanks to Bobby, he helped me facilitate some of those tough questions on how do we, how do we deal with this? So those are the two, two big issues, all of it, so, which is a good thing, considering everything else that we deal with. And then also, thanks to Angela with Groundworks, we gave an update on our grants that were coming down in Tynan and Bakowee, so good information for everyone that attended. With that, Judge, I'll hand over. Are you, are you my time to you, Judge?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Is there anybody else who likes to jump back in? Okay. I echo each of our Commissioners' comments regarding all of our vets. We value and appreciate you, certainly in B County, but across the entire United States and the greater world. Thank you for your service, for everything you've done for us, for your sacrifices, for the sacrifices of your loved ones. Move on to agenda item number six, public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioners' Court? Now is the time.
I would, sir.
Oh, okay. We have a taker?
Well, we're filling out completely right there.
Ms. Warnix, you look rested and...
Oh, yes.
That's good.
Good morning, Commissioners' Court, Judge. Thank you all for, I'd like to thank the veterans for their service, their call, and I'd like to say, thank my staff for giving up their Veterans Day. We've been counting ballots since Friday. We still have a few more to do today. Well, that'll finish up our partial manual count, and we'll get that reported to the Secretary of State. Thursday, we will be doing campus, as a reminder, in here for Commissioners. And once that is done, we will be posting all of our final results on our website and on the Secretary of State's website, so they'll be available for that. We appreciate all of our voters getting out. We appreciate all of the people that were polite and respectful and realized how many hours we were putting in and so forth, and we were very happy to be there to serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Warnix. I know this is a public comment, not a discussion item, but what was our percentage of voter turnout in B County?
50.8.
How does that stack up against...
At this point, now when we finish, it may go up a little bit.
How does that stack up against prior...
It was a little below 2022, I mean, 2020, but we had four extra days in 2020. So I'm doing a comparison chart, and I hope to have that ready to, to just kind of give y'all a comparison on Thursday.
Wonderful. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Any, anybody else wish to address Commissioners' Court? Public comment, hearing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge.
Need to approve?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion and I have a second from Commissioner Farias. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, approve expo request for auditorium fee waiver from the Beville Ladies Night Out on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. We have Ms. Shu-Garik in the audience. If there's any questions, do I hear a motion?
Need to approve?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Is there anything you wish to share with us?
Thank you all for always doing that. We appreciate it. Last year was the most we ever raised, over $55,000, so we're looking to do that this year.
That's great, Gina. Keep going. It's a very important part of our local hospital support, so we really appreciate everything that the BLNO does for the community.
Thank you.
And it's a pretty sweet party, from what I've heard.
Yeah.
It's usually mostly attended by females. I guess in, to the last two years, it's been more of a dance, right?
Well, at first, we did a first bingo.
Well, that's flow off of the, at the end of the sidewalk.
Past the sidewalk, Michael, both of us.
So the door, so the door is where the big puddle comes from, in the Justice Center. Now, the, the window and the DA's office, that has been also leaking. So I, I believe that's from the, the gutters also. It's coming down the wall.
Coming down the wall. The only reason I'm asking is if the puddle's forming at the door, is the creation of the awning going to be collecting and depositing water where it'll flow back to that puddle?
No, because the step is about almost eight inches off that. So anything that falls, it'll fall beyond it, and it won't, won't back up.
Great.
So that'll take care of that.
That's an excellent point to bring up, Judge.
Thank you. I thought so. Let's discuss, which is a short meeting. Let's discuss that.
No, it's not. It's not. It's not. It's there, but...
Yeah, that's a post-construction.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, right. No, Mr. Flores did also say that he would do the gutter on the weekend, so it wouldn't interfere with any work schedule. He would do it on Saturday and Sunday and hire, you know, he's gonna have to rent a lift to get away up there to take care of that. So the awning is no problem during the workdays, but that gutter will be a problem with a man lift up there.
Excellent. Any other discussion?
I understand the amount is $19,250.
That is correct, sir.
I'll be doing LIT. I'll do an LIT from the 409 line item. Next.
Sounds good. The motion?
Yes, that is my motion to approve this amount.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Fadias, for bringing this to our attention. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Twelve. Recognize B County for the 2023 Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is becoming an annual event. I think it was an annual event before I showed up, but I'll take credit for it. Since I came into office, we've been, we've been receiving these certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And it is due exclusively and wholly to the hard work and the excellent efforts of April Cantu and her team.
It is a county-wide, it is a county-wide effort. Our departments contribute to, to our report, and therefore it is, it is a county-wide effort. And yes, we do help lead the effort, but I appreciate everybody's support and everybody's work.
Well said. Well said, Mrs. Cantu. Thank you. Then I will retract my previous statement. I will congratulate myself once again on this wonderful achievement. Is there anybody who'd like to make a motion to recognize my wonderful efforts?
Self-holed.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? In all seriousness, this is a wonderful indicator of the quality of work that all our departments